...to order, I invite you to join us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In case of fire, there are two ways that you would exit the chamber. To my left, you would exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, and walk down a flight of stairs and outside of the building. The best way perhaps is to the rear, to the double doors, and in either case, once you're outside of the building, please get a safe way, a safe distance away from the building. Will the second vice please take the roll?
Chairman Durin.
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard, Secretary Peter Falk, Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno here, Commissioner Lori Longi.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lofakis.
Here.
Commissioner Charles Ladd.
Here.
Commissioner Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Commissioner Alan Dreinen.
Commissioner Dominic Alimo.
Here.
Commissioner Ron Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioner and Dominic Alimo for Liz Ballard until she attends. The chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda and take the applications to be received as item number four and move the executive session to item number five.
Second.
And change the numbers.
And change the numbers to correspond with that.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? Let's see. Applications to be received. Special permit, freestanding signs, JFK, Leaders for the Future. The motion would be to place that on the agenda this evening.
I'll make a motion to place that on the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? It's on the agenda this evening? Okay. Text amendment. Jose, A-frame signs under limited circumstances.
Yeah. If it's good to go, I don't know, was that the one we're supposed to get a clean copy of to you?
Uh huh. Yes.
Well, I got a clean copy if you want to. I suggest March 7th as a...
Okay.
We've got a pretty busy schedule coming up, as you can see from the...
Okay. Well, it'll give time for... Send a copy to the... Well, the people that were involved that were having it already.
I think they were... Yeah. I think they've received copies.
Do you want to send it to the chamber?
I'll definitely... I will.
Okay. XCA 1303, text amendment, define standards for accessory apartments. You want that March 7th also? Is this a...
Yeah, I think that was good to go last time.
Okay. Fine.
I think you guys were happy. There was a couple of questions that I'll ask the building official that I got from one of the commissioners, so...
So it'll give you time to have that checked.
And with all of our applications, we're not under any deadline to act on it.
On our own. Right.
Because this is our own application, so...
And public hearing, 2776, Thomasville Fire Department. What's the earliest that we aren't... Well, we haven't had anything. Are you ready to go?
They've got variances. They've had ART reviews. They got everything in, so I believe they're on a fairly tight timeframe. I was trying to get them on the 21st. They're ready to go.
All right. That sounds good. I don't know. There's nothing else on that night, right?
Well, down below.
No, whatever you may put... Yeah, whatever else comes next, so...
Okay. Well, I wouldn't put too much on... Because I did see some of the inland wetlands and the ZBA minutes on it, so, I mean, tapes, so it may take a while for even just the presentation. The next... The restaurant with liquor license, Phoenix Avenue. That's Longhorn back again. Is that great a change that it's going to...
Well, they're changing their parking lot, the way they come in and out of their park. They're adding more parking and slightly different building configurations, so not a very big change, but it's...
What date would you suggest? You suggest...
I would say March 7th.
7th also.
Because we have others that I think have...
Okay. And 2774. This is the one that we heard at a discussion and after...
Yeah. That's Town Fair Tire. I think there's some very minor site work going on, and they've had their ART, and it's just straight change of use.
You think we can take them on the 21st also? I hate...
I believe we could probably do it fairly quickly on the 21st. I can put those guys ahead of the firehouse.
Put them ahead of the firehouse?
So they don't have to sit around all night.
Okay. Well, that's what I was afraid of. All right. And the photo studio, Anjani Drive?
I think we could also hand them, you know, first thing in the evening, on the 21st. It's just accessory retail, that section that allows accessory retail uses, so they can put their photo studio in there. They just bought out three Anjani's to be precision camera.
Well, you...
They're going to have their main office there where they send people out on the field and process, but they also want to have some studio space where people, you know, like my... You know, my kids went to... I took them up to Holyoke to get their pictures taken. They'll be able to have a studio, so since it's not a permitted use, we do allow accessory as long as it's less than 10% of the floor area.
So...
So that should be no big deal.
I would put them then, too.
Yeah.
So put them on February 21st, but select the...
The order.
Of the two of them, whichever one you think is going to take the least time, put them first.
Yeah. I think...
Well, you're aware.
Trying to embarrass the least.
You go to ART, so...
Yeah. They all had ARTs. We all have.
So whichever one you think is going to...
All right. I'll use my judgment in putting them up.
And site plan review.
That's the regulation change you made last year to allow...
Right.
The thrift store to go over to George Washington Drive.
Right.
They've had their ART. They're ready to go, and I don't know whether we can... I can stick them on with the... It's not a public hearing, so I don't have to advertise it. I can stick them on the agenda, and if we get to them, we get to them with that.
On the 7th or on the 21st?
Uh...
It's up to you. If you want me to put them on the 21st, and we...
I would...
For some reason we get to them, but it's fine. But otherwise, I would say the 7th would be a better...
The 7th? Probably.
7th, probably.
All right. This... I hear the 7th. Let's try it.
I mean, I could ask them if they're willing to sit around the 21st with a chance that they may get heard if things go fast, quickly.
Well, go ahead, but...
And if not, or would they rather come in on the 7th?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a... I don't have to advertise it in the paper, so it's...
It looks like March 7th would be the best for them.
I think the 7th would be the best.
Okay. Well, I'll let them know.
Okay.
Just a...
Okay. Any other suggestions from any of you?
No.
Okay. Then that looks good. Now, the chair will entertain a motion, go into executive session, discuss spending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And we shall return.
Back to order. Executive session again was held for pending litigation with the town attorney. No votes were taken and no decisions were made. Secretary, again, please take the role, or the vice, I'm sorry, secretary's absent.
Chairman Durin?
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Here.
Secretary Peter Falk. Second Chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Lori Longi?
Here.
Commissioner Nick LaFakis?
Here.
Commissioner Charles Ladd?
Here.
Commissioner Ronald Gregory?
Yeah.
Commissioner Alan Dreinen? And Commissioner Dominic Alimo?
Here.
Commissioner Gregory will be sitting in for the absent Commissioner Falk. Minutes of January 3rd, regular meeting.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made to accept. Are any discussions, errors, additions, or omissions?
Got one on page sixteen. Paragraph two. If I can find it. Fifteen, sixteen. Let's see. Oh. Last sentence in paragraph two should be "any" not "and." It says, the sentence says, "He is trying to accomplish having a sign that can be out there in normal business hours that won't cause and traffic accidents." It should be "any" traffic accidents.
Okay, and I had one question. It lists me as being absent, but I have discussion at the end, so I wasn't sure. On January 3rd, on the first page, it says, "Absent," Lori Longi. But then on page seventeen, it says, "Commissioner Longi said." I was on the original sign committee, so I believe I was...
Is that the one where you had a application?
No, that was the next one, the seventeenth, I think, because I was late on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, she's listed as absent on the first page.
I remember that meeting with the signs. But I didn't know if I had come in late or anything, but that's why I just, I don't...
That's not our consultant.
We'll see if she writes down.
Yeah, and I was here for that.
So we'll make sure we'll correct it to say you were here.
Okay.
Okay, any further additions, errors, omissions? Not hearing none. All in favor with, as opposed, abstention? Okay, six zero one, January seventeenth, meeting.
Didn't see any.
And that's the one that I was absent. I came in late.
Motion made to accept.
Second.
The motion's seconded. Any errors, additions, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor, opposed?
I'm standing on that one.
And one abstention, six zero one. Okay, staff reports, town attorney in writing. We don't need to go through that, but the writing item here you have was what we met on. Monthly report of the zoning enforcement officer. Any questions for Jose? Jose, one thing I've noticed recently, maybe it's because the leaves are off the trees, for the zoning enforcement, or maybe you know, across from Fermi on that property, I know it's, I guess, farm property, there's piles of logs and apparently from the year ago storm, or I don't know where they came from.
Guy's got a business here. He cuts trees.
And it's, does he? But they've been laying there for quite a while. I haven't seen anything else going on.
Doesn't cut them a lot, he just cuts them.
Is that something that we had a business going there? I'll check into it.
Because I remember about a year and a half ago, I brought that up, and Jenny looked at it, and he had a business here.
Well, because, I mean, it's really, they're scattered all over behind the trees, and I thought it looks like...
Maybe he should be in the next report, the blight report.
Well, I don't know. I just noticed it, probably because the leaves are off.
Yeah. Anyway.
Anyway, great. Any questions for Jose? Jose, on the automobile, used car dealers moving down the old Chrysler dealership, is that moving?
I believe it is. I think Jenny's still, we're going to go ahead and issue the notice of violation, just to cover ourselves. I know that they were, they were having a closing, and they submitted their paperwork for DMV, because we had to sign off on it.
Yeah, and on...
But in any case, we should probably...
Five eighteen, five nine.
Put it on record that there's, that number of cars is not, in case someone else buys that property.
Oh, he's really, I mean, oh yeah, he's jammed up there. On five eighteen and five nineteen, I've never seen the trucks not there. That's CVS.
Really?
They may move them from one spot to another, but I've never seen them not on the property. But... And I see on five eighty-seven, we have ducks, and I saw another place there were chickens, and we still have no proposal. And we've got to do something for these people. Not that I want to have chickens, I couldn't take care of them, but... Okay, any questions further for the zoning enforcement officer? Or for Jose? Again, it's a good report. It's clear, concise, and you've added the property maintenance report. That's great. Very good.
What I'll probably be doing instead of, because there's a lot of closed ones, so I think what I'm going to be doing next month is, unless you want to just keep, just to save paper, just keep the open ones, and anything that's in progress on.
Can you do that by...
Well, I had to reformat their report. I mean, this report was available on SharePoint. What I did is I imported it into an Excel spreadsheet, so I could, it's my Excel spreadsheet that I update every month for you guys.
So if it's closed, what do we need it for then, really?
Pardon?
If it's closed, we don't really need it.
Right, I figured out just a few times, just so you could see what was...
Yeah, so we could see that it went from open to closed.
There was some issues there, but there's some that are still open, that citations have been issued, and there's, and there might have been a hearing on it, so I'll keep those, I'll see which ones I can get out of, so we don't have so much paper.
How many they got working this? It looks like they really shouldn't be straight out.
Sergeant Santanella is, Bob Santanella, our former traffic safety officer, is now working on the blight team. That's one, they had two people working, and I believe there's going to be another person part-time that's going to come on board when the grass starts growing.
Well, I say they're really...
That's when we tend to get the big ones.
They're really on things.
They've gone from two hundred open cases down to about thirty-something.
But still, it's a lot of...
They've done a lot of, they have done a lot of good work to...
How do you reach him if you want to talk to one of them?
There's two methods. I think there's a phone, there's a phone number for, if you want to call Jenny.
Let's see, on the school street one, he's got a guy's name there, and I know Freddie Mack owns it, so whose name is this?
Well, Freddie...
Says, "No mortgage," and the guy's name.
Sergeant Santanella, you can either contact him on the phone, I can get, or, I mean, see, click fix, we'll get a report, if you know how to use that.
Yeah, the quick fix.
The see, click fix on the computer will...
Well, I'd like to speak to him directly, but how do I reach him? Do you have a number for him?
He's here part-time. I don't have his number here, but I can get it to you.
Okay, that would be good, thank you.
I don't have it handy.
And he's here like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah, he's here part-time, so you can, he can be reached.
Well, they're really, they're really out there. That's good. Okay, going on, we're on the director of planning.
Couple, just a couple of quick things. I want to just remind everyone, and I sent everyone an agenda PDF file. I also printed it out, a meeting on Monday regarding the plan of conservation development. Sent it out to various boards and commissions and staff people for any possible comment. I think we're going to have ETV here also, so citizens can be formed as to what's going on. What I did, just explain my chart, that's just my personal view of what I think has been finished, what things are in progress. Some things like Higgins and Strand, well, the Higgins is, looks like it's been done, but the Strand not yet, so that's in yellow. The red is what, things I don't think of, we've seen any action on yet, so we can either tweak that, or perhaps discuss which items that remain to be done, are the, should we concentrate on the coming year, and then next year do the same thing.
Well, it's not just us, because some was assigned to other boards.
Right, and I have sent it out to different people, and said if they can't make it, to try at least get me written comments, so that'll be on Monday. Also, just the twenty-third, on a Saturday morning at nine o'clock at the Village Center, from nine to noon, will be the forum on the future of Thompsonville zoning. The plan is to have a couple of dial-a-ride buses at nine o'clock, do some quick tours, have people point out things they like and they don't like, or what they don't like, and...
Will you send out memos on these dates, please?
I just got a slide from the consultant, the publicity slide, and that's my next thing, is to get those out, get it on ETV, get it in newspapers, get it as much publicity as possible to the libraries, and do that. So please put that on your calendar as coming up. The other thing, last April, if you recall, we had an amendment, and I'm just going to pass it out, and I went back and looked at the minutes, and at that time, if you recall, when we had the whole controversy about decks and coverage, and we were going to try to come up with some kind of total coverage definition and regulation for residential zones that would include decks, that, because we don't have any impervious coverage.
No, that's what we've been talking about, right.
So you could develop a hundred percent of your lot.
You're right.
So I have, you know, going back on my notes, I put together draft, it's not for discussion tonight, but I hope to put it on the next agenda for discussion.
Okay, put it on...
If you can, I'll pass it out, that way you guys can take a look at it, and...
Yeah, put that on the items for discussion, and keep it there until we clear that up, too.
Twenty-third will be nine o'clock at the Village Center on High Street.
One hundred High Street? Yeah, the old church where the community development and social services are currently located, so... It'll be in the meeting, in the community room there. So a good chance for people to have some input into what they think the zoning ought to be done in Thompsonville. So please take a look at that, and I'll put it up for discussion, and then we can decide what we want to do with that.
Okay.
The other thing I'd been asked to look at, and I've been running it through a town attorney I might have on for the next agenda, is, as you know, we have a lot of requests for what we call special events, and we don't really have good standards for them, so I was asked to see if there was something, some way we could sort of formalize what we've been doing in terms of holding special events, when they have to come in before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
What are the special events, do we know? Or would you, can you give me an example?
The car shows.
Oh.
Shows. Sometimes the credit union wants to have a fundraiser, seventy-fifth anniversary of something or other. When I was in Westport, thirty years ago, they had a fairly good regulation, so I went back, and they still got it, where certain events were allowed, one-day events were allowed to occur, if they met certain things just by administrative permit. If it was more than one day, it had to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so longer, basically a lot of what we do now, because right now, we make everyone come in basically under a site plan amendment to do this, without really, the regulations are silent on it, and then we say, next year, they don't have to come back if they just...
Yeah, I see, it's, don't change if they don't check.
But there's nothing in the regs that sort of, so that's the procedure.
So do you have this one? Can you give it to us, a look at it, so we can...
Yeah, I'll email it to you. I got it down to the town attorneys to take a look at. I think, they already gave a feedback, feedback, I just gave them a final.
Basically, we rely on the police, fire, and...
And I think that has that in there, that if they get fire, police, and they meet certain standards.
And the health department, because we had, well, the one down on, I guess the school had...
Right, that way people, people won't be coming in the last minute, not knowing that what they need to do and what they don't need to do.
Right, right.
I think there were some issues while I was in vacation last year that came up that...
Okay.
So I'll get that to you also.
All righty, good. Any questions for Jose? At this point in the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield for my... and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided no one may discuss any matter of business that at this time is already elsewhere on the agenda. Any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone would like to address the commission? Anyone would like to address the commission? Last call to address the commission at this point. Okay, we'll move on. Correspondence, you had some on the table. Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, AquaTurf, March fourteenth. Put it in your datebook, and...
Yeah, let me know if you want to go. It's not a meeting night, so if...
I'll be going, I guess.
Ron, Charlie, and Liz.
Well, I think I, this year, I get the award.
All right. You got the award coming this year?
I think he does, yeah.
All right. Which, I think you've certainly been here long enough.
That's what it is.
Seventy-five years.
That's more like fifty. Okay. Then on the table, you also had from, information from Capital Region, and in your book, you had from Capital Region, and you noticed that we've cleared, although we don't have the letters yet, or we sent this stuff down.
They just acknowledged that they received it. They don't, they will send letters.
And so the zoning map regulations and A-frame signs and so forth is all taken care of. You had minutes from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I don't know if we had wetlands this time. No?
No, I think they just met Tuesday, so that's...
Also, on the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, you might want to, or probably did, on page two, revocation of zoning permit as an enforcement tool. That could be something that was interesting, that has been used or could be used at states. And another one is on page three, is a personal relationship between applicants, attorney and a board member. So it's another thing to think of when you're sitting on a hearing. Those are pretty good, quick, little information papers.
Right. I think the key to that, and in the town, you know, it does say that an attorney, that is your business and personal attorney for the board member, probably is, you have a conflict if they're representing an applicant before the commission, so.
Yellow one I saw, too.
Smaller towns, that happens a lot, you know.
We've always carried this, abstention is not a vote, I see.
Yes. In case, in cases where the statutes specifically require a number. I think in the past, we've had the town attorney say, well, does an abstention count to go, you know, with the majority, or...
Yeah.
But I think if the statutes say you need four votes to get a variance, you need four votes to get a variance.
Right.
Three votes under the abstention does not automatically make that a fourth vote, because otherwise...
But nothing requires here, except a majority vote, so the abstention wouldn't count.
There's cases when you need, when there's a petition filed protesting a zone change with two-thirds of a vote.
Well, two-thirds, all right.
And for waivers of subdivision, three-quarters of a vote, and I think certain other things. There are...
There would be areas that...
There are times when a percentage is needed, and in those cases, you know, I think the issues come up in the past, whether or not a...
Couple interesting items.
Abstention is considered to vote for it, but I think what that case reiterates is that, that if the statutes specifically say you need four votes, you need four votes.
That's...
If it's plain English.
It's, that paper has some nice little short, good information. Commissioner's correspondence, there's nothing in there. I guess there were with that magazines and so forth. Anything for Jose?
No.
Nothing? You've been around town, and nothing on problems, huh? Okay. Bond releases? There are none?
Actually, yes, there is, Charlie.
Okay, hold on there.
I just came by on Middle Road, and guy's whole front yard is paved. I think it's that rehab thing.
Well, yeah, that's, it's something, but I think that's, we want to try to keep...
We don't care?
No, no. Well, A, we don't have impervious coverage.
That's why we talked about that, and I told you it could happen.
And I think that is a state for protection of people that are at risk.
I drive by, and I look at it, go, wow.
I think they're trying to keep low-key.
Was that the old Smith Farm building?
I don't know which one it is, but it's got two curb cuts in the whole front.
Yes.
All right, well, let's, okay.
We should discuss that later.
Okay, let's move along then.
Boogie-dok.
Well, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, bond, back down. Bond releases? There are none. Will the second vice please read the legal notice and take the roll? XSA, it's a special permit for freestanding sign.
Take the roll call first?
Whichever.
Okay. Chairman Charles Duran?
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Here.
Secretary Peter Falk? Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Commissioner Lori Longi?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis?
Here.
Commissioner Charles Ladd?
Here.
Commissioner Ronald Gregory?
Yeah.
Commissioner Alan Dreinen? And Commissioner Dominic Alimo.
Again, Commissioner, Mr. Gregory will be sitting in for absent Commissioner Falk. The applicants are all out there in green shirts. It's, you're up.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will be holding a public hearing on Thursday, February seventh, two thousand and thirteen, beginning at seven PM in the Town Hall Town Council Chambers, eight hundred and twenty Enfield Street. XSA thirteen dash oh one, special permit for a freestanding sign exceeding twelve square feet in a residential district to allow a thirty-square-feet sign for the JFK Middle School at one fifty-five Raffia Road in R eighty-eight District, map sixty-eight, lot one forty-nine, JFK Leaders for the Future applicants. Town of Enfield is the owner. Dated this twenty-sixth day of January two thousand and thirteen.
If anyone's gonna speak that is not sitting at the table, you're gonna have to use this microphone, okay? Also, we won't pick you up.
If you girls or, and gentlemen will pull up chairs, just have a seat, don't need to stand. Just move them up. I guess they're all gonna take part, sure. Now, I'm going to ask you if the applicants, if you will, introduce yourselves by your name and address, and please give your, because this is a legal meeting, name and address.
Hi, I'm Jacob, and I'm at Five Grand Street.
Last name, too.
Oh, Jacob Odette, at Five Grand Street.
Thank you.
My name is Carly Flanagan, and I'm at Two Indian Run.
My name's Alyssa Whitney, and I'm at Twelve Roland Street.
My name is Paige Teacher, and I'm at Thirteen Windmill Road.
It'll pick you up. You don't have to, just talk loudly.
My name is Tori Jiggle, and I'm at Thirteen Sparkle Street.
My name is Angelique Baisier, and I'm at Ten Manor Court.
Okay.
Like I said, you don't need to, you don't need to put the microphone around. It'll pick you up.
You have the handheld for him, too, Jose?
Yeah, sure, here. If anybody wants to...
That will be easy.
Then you just leave that out there, or we'll have the town council after us. Okay, now, people, if you will, is tell us what your project is, and explain it to us.
We're with the Leadership Academy at John F. Kennedy Mills School, and we had to pick a service project, so we decided to build a school sign.
The reason for creating the sign is, number one, all Enfield public schools, except ours, have a school sign out front displaying what the school name is.
Another reason why we wanted to create a school sign was to make the students feel like they're a part of a family, and to help people know who we are, because there's been multiple people who have driven by JFK and not known what the building was.
And lastly, we wanted to make a school impact that would stay with the school forever, because a school sign is something that each student will recognize, like knowing, like that was our school.
My slide is called Creating the Sign, and in the beginning, we came up with multiple ideas for the sign, and we couldn't come up with, like, one that we all liked, so we found a compromise. And then, over time, we narrowed it down to two signs. One was an LED sign and one was out. But the final decision became the sign without the LED light. We chose not to have the LED light because of, like, the cost, and we called many sign companies, like the Sign Connection, Lazard Builders, and Cincinelli Signs, which you will map.
I called Cincinelli Signs, and their quote was one thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. We had, our dimensions were eight point seven-two inches by five, fifty-six point fifteen inches. This right here will be part of the sign, and it will be our mascot logo.
It's different than this one.
We called Sign Connection. We gave them the dimensions for the sign, and they gave us these dimensions.
By six by five, double-sided color copy printed out full logo would be a thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. And a six by five cutout with two-carved HDU sign, double-sided with full color and logo, would be three thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. No matter which one we choose, the installation for both of these would be three hundred twenty-five dollars.
Now, the logo that one of you showed us, is that the same logo that is on this sheet? Is that to replace the logo that's on the sheet we have?
Yes.
No, that's fine.
That's fine. But this is what you're gonna put on.
This is what's on the top?
That's what we want.
Okay. Pass that to Jose for the file.
Where's the sign gonna go?
Oh, maybe they haven't finished. I don't know.
Do I have a picture of that somewhere?
No, okay. Sorry to interrupt this. We go. Have you finished? Are you ready for questions? Okay. Questions for the commission, for the ladies and gentlemen? The question was, where the property is the sign to be placed, I believe. Is that your question?
Yeah, I think it's in front of the library.
Yes, it's gonna be in front of the library and the flagpole. It's gonna be, if you see the flagpole and you look out from the library, it'll be directly in front of that.
Okay. They had, Jose, you have the authorization from the Town of Enfield? It's on file?
Yes, I do.
Okay, just don't want them to...
The application itself was signed by, the application form was signed by the town manager, so.
And there was also no problem with the public safety officer? Any further questions for these people? Are you letting them off easy?
I just was kind of curious. What's your timetable for putting this? When do you expect to do the sign?
They gotta collect money, I guess, or I don't know.
Around six weeks.
Oh, okay.
You have the funds already?
Yes.
Oh, wow. I saw you look back.
Mr. Chair, I have one comment and one question. The comment is that I think it's a good idea, because I've been by there hundreds of times, and I never knew you were known as the Patriots. So that would be informative. And the other question, who's paying for the sign? Did you guys collect money, or?
Yeah, we're gonna have some fundraising ideas that was gonna go on.
Who paid for the signs at the other schools?
A PTO, I don't know.
Was it the town, do you know? Did we find that out? No?
I think PTO's a PTO.
They have money in the Student Activity Fund. There's a line item actually for it.
Okay.
Just so if any, because they, nobody would have heard that.
No, I know it.
There's a, there's a line item out of the Student Activity Fund, was what they said.
Okay. Okay. So apparently, you've accepted a bid, then. All right, which isn't our business anyway. Any, no further questions for these people?
I have one.
Yes.
Who made the signs for, like...
They wouldn't know. The other schools, I guess they were all bid separately.
Yeah, I mean, most of them look like they're Little John's.
They probably, they may be.
Signs, you know, like Hasfield Memorial and, and all those.
They may be.
I just wondered if they checked into Little John to see what his prices would be.
Well, that's not our businesses.
Oh, I know.
Okay. Anything further? I want to commend you for doing this, also coming forward. It's sort of difficult, especially at your age, to come before us and present, make a presentation, and also know that you're on TV. Maybe your parents are home watching you, or you're...
All your friends are watching.
I'm sure you'll be hits tomorrow on TV land. We appreciate you coming in, and I think it's great that you got involved in things. I hope you keep it up as you go along in Adults. We need, we need you as future leaders.
I also would like to commend them on doing this, and I do know that you were the Patriots, because I did not go to JFK, but went to Koshusko, and you were our rival at the time, and they were the Patriots, so I did know that. And I'm very pleased to see a sign, because all our elementary schools do have nice signs in the front, and you can drive right by Kennedy and not know, unless you know it's the school, you know, you won't even know it is. So good job, kids, and good luck on the sign, so.
Now, I've got to do one more thing, so if you will vacate the seats, although we may have some people. Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? You know, if you vacate, let people, people may want to come up and talk for this. Anyone in the audience would like to talk in favor or against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to talk in favor or against this application? Last call to talk in favor or against this application. Now, close public hearing, XSA thirteen dash oh one.
I'll make a motion to waive the full submissions requirements of section nine point one oh point two, because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Seems like a good idea to me.
Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the waiver? It's unanimous, seven zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve XSA number thirteen dash oh one, a special permit for a freestanding sign exceeding twelve square feet in a residential district to allow a thirty-square-foot plus-or-minus sign for the JFK Middle School at one fifty-five Raffia Road in an R eighty-eight District, map sixty-eight, lot one forty-nine, JFK Leaders for the Future applicants. The Town of Enfield is the owner. This approval is subject to the conformance with the plan submitted as part of the record, and the following conditions, there are four conditions, in a memo dated by Jose Guiner, January thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
And you agree with the conditions? Yes, well, good.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you again very much for your presentation, and good luck with your future. Hope to hear, see you back.
Thank you.
Okay, good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, all business, non-new business. SPR fifteen eighty, change of use from a vacant office to a personal service. SPR 1580, change of use from a vacant office to personal services, tattoo parlor at 552 Hazard Avenue, Business Local BL District, MAP 110, Lot 350, Jamie Rena applicant, Kamish and Rashina Mystery LLC owners. Uh, will the secretary please, I'm sorry, second vice, please take the role.
Chairman Charles Duran.
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard. Secretary Peter Falk. Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Here.
Commissioner Nick LeFakis.
Here.
Commissioner Charles Ladd.
Here.
Commissioner Ronald Gregory.
Yeah.
Commissioner Alan Drynan. And Commissioner Dominic Alimo.
Here.
Okay, again, Commissioner Gregory will be sitting in for absent Commissioner Falk. Uh, on your desk tonight, you had, uh, two items, a receipt, uh, from, uh, the Health Department, and a letter certifying the inspection or the doctor that will be doing is taking care of the tattoo shop. And, uh, you have an okay from the public safety officer, Hazard Fire Department, and the Water Pollution Department. Uh, applicants here, if you will give your name and address, please, and explain your pursuit, your application.
Uh, Jamie Rena, 40 Spruessland Road. Uh, the application is to change a vacant office space into a tattoo, um, parlor. By appointment only, it's not a walk-in tattoo studio.
Okay, uh, so you won't have, your office won't be there then? Is that it? Your office is at home?
Uh, there's actually two office spaces that I'll be renting out. One space will be kind of an entry area, the second room will be for the tattoo procedure itself.
Oh, well, no, 'cause you said it was by appointment only, I was just wondering how they got in touch with you. You gonna be there at 20...
Uh, no, basically, most people have my cellphone number, and they get ahold of me that way.
Well, that's, that's what I, okay.
So then, you're not gonna have any hours, basically?
No, actually, uh, this is a second job hobby for me.
Okay.
So I do have a nine-to-five job. So most hours will be 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on the weekday, weekdays, approximately 10:00 to 9:00 PM every other weekend.
Okay, so, actually, that takes care of the general conditions, the hours of operation. If you would repeat that again?
Sure. 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM during the weekday.
Mm-hmm.
And 10:00 AM to approximately 9:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, every other.
Probably just hadn't put it...
Saturday, Sunday.
I did bring, I actually brought, uh, a listing of my open appointments for the months of February and March, to kind of give you an understanding of what those hours would be, if you'd like me to...
No, that's fine.
Well, no, no, it's all right, because I don't, you're not in an area, it's sort of open out there.
Yeah.
The reason we just put down Saturday and Sunday is in case you change your mind and decide to come an extra Saturday, you can.
Yes. Okay. It's better for you.
No sense limiting you.
Okay, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Any further questions for the gentleman?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. I'm, uh, referring to premise. Does that mean just the location of the tattoo, or the whole building that he's in?
The premises is the whole building.
Okay, maybe he should change the wording, now, if you're gonna be above the package star, it says here, no alcohol will be on premise. So I think you change that to mean in your...
On the second floor.
Second floor, I think you would want, not just, the premise would be all, the whole building, I think. No?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
You're right.
Are you referring to the doctor's letter, or you're referring...
Yeah, it's on the doctor's letter that I'm reading.
There is alcohol in it.
There's, right. So, I mean, obviously, he's aware, he came out, so I'm not sure how...
I think he intended the premises to mean the...
His own unit.
Maybe we should just put some different wording to it, if you want.
Put it in its condition, that's all.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I add a 11th, or, or put it in someplace in the number...
You can just add that the, uh, right, yeah, you can put number 11, just saying that premises as, as used by the...
Tattoo.
By, by the doctor refers to the tattooing office only.
Are you the only tat-tuist, or?
Yep, I'm the owner and only tat-tuist.
Then you'll be the only one doing the...
Yes.
Notice one good thing, being on the second floor, we don't have to worry about him being seen from the street, when he's working.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing.
Well, now, there's plenty of parking out there.
Right, there was, there was parking. I just had, the staircase that goes up to your unit also goes up to the other unit? Right, okay, that's what I...
Now...
The units separated, there, there's locking doors, both sides.
Yeah, they were separate. I saw the doors on there, but I just thought I'd ask.
Although we don't do signs, you're planning for signs, I hope so?
Actually, I have an agreement with the landlord, there'll be no signs.
No signs? I was just wondering how you do your advertising.
Word of mouth.
Uh, I, we've put a, an address number on the door, just indicated that 554 is the address, um, on the lease, so we put 554 on the door, and a hanging sign.
Well, I guess when they make an appointment with you, you tell them how to get there.
I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if you decide later, or for some reason, you need to change signs, you go up to the, Jose's office and work with them.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions for the gentleman? It's an SPR, so...
Oh, it's just a sign plan, oh, okay.
I can close SPR. Jose, do you have anything?
No, it's pretty straightforward, pretty low-key. Personal service use.
Then I'll close SPR 1580.
I'll make a motion to waive the full submission requirements of Section 9.10.2, because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, on the waiver. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, it's unanimous, 7-0-0.
I'll make a motion to approve SPR number 1580, change of use from a vacant office to personal services, tattooing parlor at 552 Hazard Avenue in a Business Local District, MAP 110, Lot 350, Jamie Rena applicant, Kamish and Rashina Mystery LLC owners, subject to the conformance with the submitted plans and the following conditions, and there were 11 conditions, with the one being added that the premise referred to the tattooing office only, and a memo dated February 1, 2013 by Jose Guiner.
Second.
Now, last, the applicant, have you read the conditions?
I have.
Any problems? And we've put in the hours of operation.
Operation.
Okay. The motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, 7-0-0.
Good luck.
Good luck, I think it's a good location for it.
Better than in your house.
Okay, moving on, discussion of poultry regulations. Lori, you're here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What's, how's, how are the chickens coming?
Um, Kevin Denine actually just said tonight that he was gonna call me tomorrow regarding it, but that they had moved forward and looked at everything, so he just wanted to go over everything before sending them out to the commission for the next meeting.
Okay.
So that was good.
Does that have to go to Capitol Region?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when he comes back with them...
Yeah, if he gets something that's clean, I'll send it, I'll start the process, just get it over for their review, and then we can sit here.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
So that's good.
Maybe this spring we'll have chickens. Okay, discussion of land states, landscaping standards for home occupations, and, uh...
Okay. I had one comment.
Go ahead.
On, um, I had brought up at the last meeting, I think it was, that only, we were talking about one commercial vehicle may be kept on the lot, but commercial vehicle does not delineate if somebody puts, um, a combination plate on it, or a camper trailer plate on it. So, I think we should go with one truck, one trailer, if that's what we want, because otherwise Jenny couldn't enforce it, 'cause if somebody had put combination plates on it, it would not be classified as a commercial vehicle. Or if they had camper trailer plates on it, it would be, it would kind of bypass, and she wouldn't be able to enforce it.
Okay, where would you be adding that line?
It was on num, it was on K, number two. Um, we had discussed about one commercial vehicle, but then, when I looked up what...
So you're changing, dropping the word "commercial"?
Yeah.
And it'll read only one vehicle?
One truck, one trailer. Because you can't really have it without the trailer. But we don't want one truck, five trailers. So that way, it leaves a little flexibility, 'cause some people do use combination plates.
Okay, only one, only one truck and one trailer.
Uh-huh.
May be kept on the lot.
And still subjective standards of Section 3.30, which...
Yes, right.
Which governs gross vehicle weight, and, and they could come in for a special permit like anyone else.
Permit, if they needed to go with the commercial.
Uh, and show that they, they can screen it. And also on, that's also shown on L5. I'm gonna have to change that also.
Okay, yep. And I noticed something else, Jose, in the numbering. K went 1, 2, 3, and then 5.
Yeah, probably.
And I just wanted to point that out, so you can...
1, 2, 3, 5, well, that's a good way to go.
Well, see whether I forgot 4, or just...
Well, I didn't know, that's why I...
I have to see one of my drafts.
Right, that's why I just wanted to make, just so you were aware of it.
Check one of my past drafts and see if there was something I left out.
I, I have a question, Jose, are you done, Lori? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have a question. You know, I'm going to read the text and this over and everything, but what about, there are people who do this, who live in condominiums, and are these, these are gonna apply to that as well? I mean, to...
The association with...
'Cause now you have an association as well, that...
Where do they keep their vehicles?
Well, they have garages, I mean, condos do have garages, so they could keep it in the garage, I mean...
I think an association trumps any of...
Well, we'd still have to register as a home occupation and meet these standards. Whether the association wants to allow it or not, that's up to them. Our regulations can allow something, but the Homeowners' Association can prohibit it. Obviously, they have their own, they set up their own internal rules, but this applies to any residential district. Anyone who has a home.
Right, so, but, so with, then if they lived in a condo, I mean, wouldn't the condo association rules trump the, the zoning regulations?
As long as it's stricter. They can't say, well, we're gonna allow... We don't want you. We're gonna allow three commercial vehicles. They couldn't, they couldn't do that.
Okay. What about the guy that just has one truck? And, and I'm asking this from personal experience, so, you know, I, I mean, um, the guy, the one guy that just has a truck and a, and, you know, and maybe a lawnmower, sit-down lawnmower or something, I mean...
Would fall under that lawn maintenance, and that would be fine.
Okay. So, but he'd still have to come, register with the town to...
Right, as a home occupation, and they have to keep it, you know, inside, it's either inside the dwelling or, or the accessory structure, so they have to keep it. Point is, you know, I'm sure the condo association or apartment building doesn't wanna see lawnmowers and, and trucks all over the place, either.
So, say...
Further limited, you know, we, we say, here's the rules, there's nothing keeping a homeowners' association from being stricter than we are.
Okay.
Saying, well, we don't want them anyway. Uh, you can't use your property for a home, for, for, for this type of home occupation.
Yeah.
But conversely, they can't say... That's up to them, we're saying, we're gonna allow them, if you meet these standards, we'll give you a permit. It's up to you, then, to make your peace with the homeowners' association. But conversely, the association can't say, okay, you can have two trucks and two trailers, they can't do that. They cannot be less, the stricter rule applies.
Right, the stricter rule applies.
So would that be the same for a four-family house?
Oh, absolutely.
If you had a four-family, it would be the same way as, as if you were living in a condo?
Well, yeah, it's...
It'd be up to the landlord, then.
What, could the landlord allow four trailers?
No.
Still be one trailer, no matter what?
For the property.
Right.
One per property.
Well, let me...
What if there was two tenants that were, were both in the same business, then what would you do? One can have a trailer, and the other one can't?
Yeah, that's true, though, too. It says, uh...
It says only one truck or one trailer may be kept on the lot, so, right, if you have a multi-family...
I, I noticed a couple of six families around, you can get two people to do summer landscaping, and then one...
Yeah, but they can only have, that's right, but one of them can have this material on the property, the others four have to, or three go elsewhere.
If you have a six family, and you've got six trucks and...
Well, if you had a four-family, and you had two, two guys doing it, though, so one guy would have to go search to park his truck, and the other guy's fine.
Right.
Except for if it was a pickup, well, if it was just a regularly registered vehicle, would be fine.
No, I mean, if they were both in a landscaping business separately, and they both lived in the same four-family complex.
You're not gonna...
I'm, I'm just saying, what if? What if it's to happen? What do you do?
They'd have to probably come back here.
Can you give them a waiver to that property owner or something, and we can allow it? Okay, okay, that's fine, that would make sense, just give a waiver. Okay, thank you.
And actually, that would be a valid, that would be a valid thing.
Reason to waive it, correct, thank you.
ZDA or something, I don't know, okay.
I mean, that would be a hardship, I would think.
Anything else on this particular one? Are we ready to go with this?
I, I have a question about the specifics on the trailers. What, what did we say about that? Were they open, closed?
We were talking about length.
Length?
I also use...
Well, I mean, we said one truck, one trailer, because we didn't wanna have, like, a flatbed trailer, and then the box trailer that they have for leaves or whatever, so I think we were just saying, one truck, one trailer. I don't know particularly length. I mean, I know some people have them longer, and some are shorter.
Yeah, so would they be, we wouldn't have a limit to that, then, as long as it's one single trailer, and they can have four lawnmowers on that one trailer?
It'd be a, a legal trailer.
I don't know if there's legalities with the lengths of trailers, I don't know.
My, my feeling on it is, it's probably gonna be somebody either young, that is doing like a startup business that wants to mow lawns, or maybe somebody retired that wants to mow lawns. They're not really looking to have a ton of equipment, but they just wanna do their business.
Yeah.
But, being a neighbor, you don't wanna have them have, like, you know, a whole fleet of trailers.
Which we run into.
I think the most complaints is when businesses start becoming, you know, when you start hiring other people.
Yeah.
They start coming over, they park their cars, they, they meet there, they load up equipment in the morning, they got, they start storing fertilizer, they start storing all sorts of things, and becomes more of a, it tends to grow out of being just lawn maintenance to more of a contracting business.
Right.
And I think that's when we start getting the complaints.
Well, we also were trying to take care of the guy that wants to just mow lawns, and the, but then you do have people start off mowing lawns, and they end up, uh, doing about everything.
More gasoline storage, oil storage, more problems, yep, I agree.
But, I mean, I think it's a good, a good thing, because there are a lot of little people that are small, and they only do, like, you know, 20 lawns, so...
And, and what I usually tell people in home occupations, are, if we start getting complaints, it's probably time to look for...
Well, we ain't after the 14 and 15-year-old of Moses' neighbor lawn, either.
It's supposed to mix into the residential neighborhood, with, with, almost like seamlessly, with, with no, if we start getting people complaining in the neighborhood, chances are, you're probably outgrown a home occupation, and should start looking for rentals somewhere.
Right, right. Okay, are, so are we ready to go with that?
Yeah, it looks good. Yeah, it looks good.
I'll put, give it a number and send it along to CROG and make the changes that you asked them.
A-frame signs is next.
Yeah, you wanted a clean copy, had already sent it to CROG, I made the changes that you asked for. I think was number 6, VI over there on D, the A-frame sign must be anchored to the ground and properly secured against movement from the wind. The anchoring shall not be readily visible, due to no concrete blocks or sandbags, I didn't know how to get too specific with that, but I figured it should be some kind of anchoring that's kind of hidden in... And I think the other one was... I think that was one of the few changes that we had.
The only thing I had was item 11. The approval, it says from the office, should it be ZO?
I mean, that's consistent with the signage, the signage stuff all goes through the planning office.
Oh, all right, because before you, that's right.
It always was the plan, and then we had, actually Roger did it.
Roger did it all, yeah, that's, all right, well, I don't know who's doing it, so it's just a planning, okay.
So I just wanted to make sure we were consistent with it, it'll be the ZO.
No, no, because you assign it to who's, who's ever there, I know, okay.
Whoever we have...
And we've been shorthanded if they're doing it.
Like, today I signed off on a home occupation, we didn't look here, so...
So that one is, is that ready to go with you people then, too?
Yeah.
Looks good.
I think we've set it for the 7th, and so we'll wait to hear from CROG.
Now, would you have, I don't know who else, who else in your office has had work with signs, except Ginny, would she be available, or, I don't know, Barbara? Can they have some explanation of problems that they might have, or will have, or can imagine with this?
I will send it, I know I will send it to the chamber, just to see, I know...
Have Ginny look at it.
Have Ginny look at it, because I like Ginny's opinion on it, because she's the one that deals with it and knows the ins and outs.
From an enforcement point of view, if there's any questions.
Right.
We don't want to, we don't want a big mess, and yet we want to help the commercial people out.
I thought it was pretty good.
Okay.
And again, it was, you know, basically all the comments that Mr. Turcini's in his...
Dominic hasn't said much, I was wondering, does this help you out at your place?
I think it's a good start.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering.
We're probably not perfect, but we could always come back and change.
Always tweak it later.
Yeah, if something becomes a little problem we didn't notice.
So are we ready to go with this, then?
Yep.
Okay, then let's go with it. That takes care of that, and anything else, Jose?
No, just, just a quick question, I had somebody come in, you know, that, under other business, late this afternoon, applying for a building permit at the water towers, and I don't think it requires, it's, it's an existing carrier, they're not putting up any new antennas on the tower, they're gonna be reconfiguring their ground equipment, they're going from a 6 by 6 to a 9 by 8, just because they have to modernize their equipment, it's all within the existing compound, I didn't see a need for them to come in for site plan, I said, I think we're pretty busy. I said, I'll run it by the commission, but I intend to sign off just on the building.
Is it the big blue tower, the one?
The ones on Enfield Street, it's all within the existing compound, there's already bigger boxes than they have in there, it won't be seen from anywhere.
Oh, okay, with it.
Minor, minor increase.
Okay, Chair, take a motion to allow Jose to handle that addition?
Yep, I'll make a motion to let Jose handle that administratively.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion, all in favor, it's unanimous, Jose, go to it.
Great.
Go for it.
Think it's a major impact on there. It's all equipment that's modernized, you know, it won't be seen.
Anything further?
That's it, make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, the motion's made and seconded, all in favor. Okay, thank you again, ladies and gentlemen.